Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. First, I'd like to thank our students and staff for coming out to support this program. So, we're here today to present our Maple Point mentoring program. What does that look like? So if you were to come through our building around 2:25, you would see a variety of activities that would be occurring. For example, last Friday, I happened to walk into one of our classrooms and they're making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. You're like, how does that relate to mentoring? Well, the backstory to this is students ended up in pairs and they had to create their specific instructions on how to make this. And then they would give it to another partner and they'd actually read it. And as they're reading it, the other team would have to follow step by step to create this peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So imagine leaving out steps and what that sandwich just may or may not look like, taste, and of course, we checked for peanut allergies. You may walk through and see groups playing Chinese tic-tac-toe competitions. I was fortunate to walk in and have competitions with our students and they get very competitive. You may walk through and see UNO tournaments going on. In a little while, you'll see an activity that we did. It's a combined win game activity. It's a competition. We're actually going to invite you to participate with our students. We feel that the mentoring program, Family Friday, is a point of difference for Maple Point Middle School. So where did all this come from? First off, we went and looked at our district beliefs and we felt, bought too, all people having worth. In mentoring and Family Fridays, we want to make sure our students are having that laughter, joy, and hope that are essential for their quality life. We're valuing diversity, strengthening our society. We're looking to build self-esteem within our students. We want to make sure that our students have a responsibility to themselves and to others. And finally, that family is a cornerstone of society. Well, family is the cornerstone of our mentoring program and we really want that to be embedded into our school. How was this identified? A few years back, I was looking at a way to shrink the size of our building and for our students to build relationships. I got feedback from students, from staff, from parents on how we can make them feel one. Bringing fifth grade into a big building, how can they feel a part of this? So I was fortunate back in 2018 to attend a presentation to the University of Pennsylvania, the Delaware Valley Consortium for Equity and Excellence with Dr. Hancock. And at that presentation, I happened to see Dr. Christopher Liang, who is a professor and a published author from Lehigh University. His presentation was on ACEs. ACEs is something that deals with adverse childhood experiences that students experience in the classroom that affect learning. Anything from abuse, neglect, family issues, divorce, poverty, all kinds of things that students carry into the classroom and affect their learning. At that presentation, when I finished, I asked Dr. Hancock, could we bring Dr. Liang to Maple Point to talk to our staff so we could see the impact of childhood traumas? Through that process, it led to the mentoring period because we realized that every student needed an adult to turn to, that knew them, that they could talk to, that they could go to, and the mentoring process has led to that. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sean Neely, one of my assistant principals, and he's going to go through the creation of the mentoring period. Mr. Neely.
Good evening. So our teachers were armed with that information, a very powerful message from Dr. Liang. And a lot of them hit the ground running and went back to their classrooms and did some impromptu surveys with their classes about how many of these things affect each and every one of them in their lives. And the results were astounding. They came back and reported to Andy and I how many of these things were actually affecting the kids that were sitting in front of them each and every day. So as an administrative team, we came up with the idea that we need to do something. So we came up with the goal, and our goal is that every Maple Point student has at least one adult in the building that can advocate for them and to whom they can turn to in a need of, in any time of need. We looked at our win classes. We cut the class sizes down from 20 to 30. We used every teacher in the building. We cut them down to 16 to 20. Students in grades five to eight will stay with that win teacher as they move through all four years at Maple Point. Our regular win period runs on Monday to Thursday, and we now have Family Fridays, which all these activities take place. But during the win period, the kids are going out, doing whatever they need. They're getting the extra help in other classes so they have the ability to see other teachers. But on Friday, they stay totally with inside their family. So we knew we couldn't do it alone. So in June of 2018, on our last day faculty meeting, we asked for a group, for teachers to stay back to begin to look at how to create this for us. And after the faculty meeting, we called together expecting to get maybe 15 or 20 staff members. We ended up with 50 or 60 who sat in a room last day of school in June. And I have with me right now two of them who can discuss what we actually just talked about during that. So I have Mr. Chuck Lumio, one of our eighth grade science teachers, and Mr. Kevin Hastings, one of our eighth grade social studies teachers, who talk a little bit more about where this came from.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Hastings, Chuck Lumio. After we met with Dr. Liang and had that meeting, one of the things I did in my classroom was I decided to do a confidential poll. And I asked students what of these childhood experiences they had gone through. And I was shocked by the results. High percentages of kids in each class had experienced divorce and abuse, neglect, et cetera. And I thought to myself, and I knew Chuck and I had been discussing this with other staff members, that how many of these kids fall through the cracks? How many of these kids that we don't know about are suffering and when they come in to learn? And we started to have conversations when Mr. Neely invited us to that meeting, and it's where this all kind of took off.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Lumio. So to parlay on what Kev had said, so prior to the meeting that Mr. Neely was talking about, we went down to his office and we presented this idea to Mr. Neely. We said, what if we take this gigantic school and we shrink it? And how are we going to do that? We're going to do it by taking fifth graders and mixing them with sixth graders and seventh graders and eighth graders. And we're going to mix these groups so that they can matriculate through Maple Point and have the same person that they see every single day and build a relationship with that same person. Not only the teacher, but the kids in the classroom. So that we can, so that as kids walk around the hallways, they don't feel like it's such a big place because they know someone wherever they go. If an eighth grader's walking in the fifth grade hallway, a fifth grader knows them and they could shout out their name, you know? And it all came from an experience that I had had on the street, walking down the street in New Hope with my family, and somebody yells from a car to my son, "Hey, Chase." And I looked at my son, I said, "Who was that?" He goes, "Oh, that's a kid from the high school." Now, Chase was in fourth grade. I said, "Well, how do you know a kid from the high school?" He said, "Well, they all come down and they talk with us in our rooms." And I brought that to lunch the next day, and Kevin and I started talking about, we presented to Sean. It's worked wonders. It's a wonderful thing. And when we called together that group at the last day of school in 2018, and we thought we'd get 15 people, we had 50 people buying in. And when we walked out of that, this, out of that room that day, we knew that what we could create here at Maple Point was going to be so much more powerful than we ever even imagined. And we've come a long way since 2018. And we've got, our assistant principal, Neil French, is going to speak to us about the progression of where we've come from and now where we're going to head to. So, Neil?
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Kevin. With the information from Dr. Liang and some of the informal polls that were given by teachers, we set out for the 2018-2019 school year with pretty, you know, ambitious intentions. We knew that these issues were prevalent in our building and we wanted to hit the ground running in 2018-19 to see how we could attack them. And we, early in the year, we put together on a PD day, teams of teachers who were tasked with coming up with activities that we could facilitate during the win period that would help us achieve our goal. And although the activities were productive and very well thought out and with good intentions, we found that in 2018-19, we were just a little bit maybe too heavy. We were diving headfirst into some topics that maybe the students weren't necessarily ready for or comfortable enough in their group to discuss. And we had a good year and we felt like we made progress and the groups were growing, but it was too much of student-led activities. The teachers were at the forefront of creating the activities and delivering them, and the focus in 2018-19 was maybe a little bit too much adult-heavy. And although we had a productive year, heading into 2019-20, we took a step back and we kind of changed gears. And what we did is rebrand from Mentor Mondays in 2018-19 to Family Fridays in 2019-20. And the thought process there was ultimately, we're trying to create these families inside these win periods. So we took a step back and thought about what do productive families look like? What do productive and healthy and successful families do? They laugh together. They support each other. They play together. They enjoy each other's company. And much like our own families, we didn't choose our family members. These students didn't choose these groups that they're with in win. They were just kind of randomly generated through the computer, just like our families are randomly generated. So some of the skills that needed to be in place in order for this to be successful were compromise, just like we compromise in our own families, problem solving, mediation when necessary. But at the end of the day, no matter what we go through on a particular week, the goal was to leave on a Friday feeling good about who we are as a family. Some of the photos you see here are just some action shots from random win periods throughout the course of the first semester. It's as simple as playing checkers. The middle picture is a group that created their own board game. Their win group got together and came up with their own game that they kind of designed and played together. We're going to talk a little bit in a few minutes about what inclusion looks like inside these rooms. And one area of progress is our No Place for Hate door decorating contest, which we did participate in in 2018-19 and then again in 2019-20. And what I found early in the school year was before the door decorating contest was even on the calendar or discussed, students were walking up to us saying, "When's the door decorating contest?" We hadn't even broken out into our win families yet and the students were ready to go. We took a picture of every door in 2018-19 and again this year, and I think you can see the effort, the competitive spirit, the cohesion. Just with one year of steam kind of behind the group, they just really dove in and took this personal and took a lot of pride in what they did. And that's just an example of the growth. When we set out to do this, we said, this is a culture change. This is something that's going to take four years. Until that first group of fifth graders goes all the way through and experiences this, we won't truly know the impact, but that's just one quick example of what it looks like from year one to year two. We are excited to make this real for you tonight. We've invited some of our staff and students here to talk about what they're experiencing on a day-to-day basis inside their win period and on Family Friday. First up, we have Ms. Allison Hughes. Allison is a second-year sixth-grade science teacher, so her experience at Maple Point kind of coincides with the program. She's been here two years. The program is two years old. With her tonight is Molly Hitchen, who also happens to be our student council president, and Matthew Gomez. This is an interesting part about the program and how it helps with transition. Matt came to Maple Point just two weeks ago. So when he arrived at Maple Point, he was assigned to Ms. Hughes's win and her family, her win family. And Ms. Hughes and Molly are going to talk a little bit about what life looks like inside their win. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Allison Hughes.
As Mr. French said, my name is Allison Hughes. I am a sixth-grade science teacher at Maple Point. I just want to give you a little glimpse of what my win period looked like in the beginning of the year, or sorry, the beginning of 2018. I came into this school coming from a very small school of about 400 kids. And I came to this school of four grades, 1,500 students, extremely large school, and that was overwhelming for me. So I know that fifth graders coming into this school, I'm sure it's overwhelming. And when this program started, and I'm sure Molly's going to stress this point, it was very awkward when these 16 kids originally came into my room. They were so quiet. They wouldn't talk. They all came in the room and they sat together in their own grades because that's who they knew. And then today, if you were to look at my room, they, I couldn't stop them talking if I tried. They help each other. They respect each other. They have conversations about school, outside of school, sports. They teach each other things that are going on as you go through the years of Maple Point and middle school. As I was talking to them about this experience of coming here, some of the things that they just kept saying was, "This is my comfort zone." I know that no matter who I get next year or who, what teachers I have or who's in my class, because that is the number one thing that they worry about from year to year, who will be in my class, I know at least I have win. And I found myself thinking this year, coming into, I have 170 new kids coming in, at least I knew my 16, 17 kids that were in my win period. So for me, as a new student, and I'm sure other teachers, every year we get these new students, I get to see these students grow. So I can only tell you my perspective, though. I want to tell you the experience that my kids have seen from their eyes. And Molly has been here longer than I have at Maple Point. This is her fourth year at Maple Point. She's an eighth grader. And on the complete opposite side of the spectrum is Matthew Gomez. He came in two weeks ago now, which you would have not guessed because a week ago, our first Family Friday that he experienced, I looked over and I'm trying to find Matthew amongst all the different games that we have going on, and Matthew's like right in the middle. He wasn't sitting alone like I thought a new student would be doing or doing his homework. He was right in the middle playing, I don't know, he was playing Django or something at the time. So the ability for the other kids to wrap their arms around him, show him where to go, answer his questions, help him with his homework, just like he was a member of our family for the last 18 months, was absolutely incredible to see. So each day, they shock me. I want to have Molly explain a little bit what she's seen from the beginning of the year to now.
Hello. I'm Molly Hitchen. I'm an eighth grader in Ms. Hughes's win class. So at the beginning of this year, I was like super duper excited to get back to our win period. And although we went back to our first period for the first month of school or so, I couldn't wait to get back to my win family because we had so much growth in between the first couple of weeks when it was just so awkward and I did not want to talk or do anything. I sat quietly, did my homework. But at the end of the year, we couldn't stop talking to each other. I made friends within grades. I'm friends with a bunch of seventh graders, fifth graders, sixth graders even, and you'd think that eighth graders, why would I want to talk to a fifth grader? But I see these fifth graders and sixth graders and seventh graders in the hallways and I always say, like, "Yo, what's up? How's your day going?" Because it just makes that much of a difference to have friends within grades so that way we can, like, we recognize them in the hallways. And I can say, I see their homework, I'm like, "Oh, I had that teacher last year. Let me help you out." Or I show them what I'm doing so they can see what they're doing in the upcoming years and things like that. And it's always just so comfortable to know that, you know, if I have a rough day or something like that, it's a Family Friday. I can go back to my win at the end of the day and play games and I'm with a trusted adult that even though I've never even had her in sixth grade, I had different teachers, I can still trust her and tell her about my day and she can help me and I can help her and I can help other students and other students can help me. It's just comfortable. It's a great environment to be a part of and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Okay. Our next guest is Mrs. Melissa Curran, who's in her 11th, her 11th year. She's an SLS teacher in our building. Laura Miller, an eighth grader, was hoping to join her tonight, but unfortunately, she was out today. Anthony Manzo is going to join her, another eighth grader. Mrs. Curran's message is going to be about inclusion and how inclusion is one of the, kind of the spokes in the wheel of our program and something that we're trying to promote on a day-to-day basis.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Curran and this is Anthony Manzo. So most of my day, I'm teaching specialized learning support with fifth through eighth graders. These students have many different disabilities and obstacles throughout their day to communicate, to interact, to learn. So I spend most of my day making sure they feel as part of the Maple Point environment. And I have, you know, in the past, expressed to Mr. Sokol about how, you know, we don't always feel like we belong, you know, we kind of always stay off to ourselves. So when he told me about this idea for Mentoring Mondays at the time, now it's Family Fridays, it was great to me. Like, we can spread these guys out, they can meet new teachers, they can meet new people. So it was a nice way to see them feel included. And then what I watched happen through the two years that we've been doing the program is my students that would stay kind of off to the side in the beginning and I couldn't convince them to talk or use their devices to communicate with the other students, like now they're like spread out, they're running games, they're teaching eighth graders and stuff how to play the games that they're excited about and that they want to bring to school. So I brought Anthony here with me. Anthony's become a little bit of a leader in our class. He's in eighth grade and he's experienced all the years. So when students come and they have concerns, Anthony kind of seems to share his journey and figure it out. So today, Anthony and I were talking a little bit about win. He said, one of his favorite things about win is helping the other students and getting to know kids that he wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to know. Right, Anthony?
Yeah.
So he, do you want to talk a little bit about how you?
Coming into Mentoring Monday in 2018, I was like really nervous. Not nervous really, just I didn't know any of the kids in there. Like, I knew the eighth graders, that was it. We had like spread out tables and I would just sit with the eighth graders because I never knew, I never interacted with like all the other students. But towards the end of that year, like I realized that they're just like us, we can just hang out with them, talk to them normally, tell them my problems and they could help me and I could help them and just share my experiences in life and hopefully they learn from them. And coming into 2019 school year, I was really happy because I know like all the kids in my win besides the fifth graders that just came in. But like just talking to them, like for example, like I personally, I like messed up on a few tests this year, but I like wanted to show them like that they could do better on them. So I was talking to Ms. Curran like about two weeks ago, how like I want to work harder because next year I go to high school and stuff and I want to like be upper in higher classes and stuff. And I was talking to one of the seventh graders that's about to come into the eighth grade and like, "Hey, like try your hardest, like you need to get up higher in high school and stuff because it will benefit you throughout your life." So that was my experience with Win Friday and Family Friday.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job.
Okay. We're going to bring Mr. Chuck Lumio back up. He's joined tonight by Jigar Patel, a sixth grader, and they're going to talk about the growth, coming in as a fifth grader and what that looks like and kind of the progress from year one to year two. Abby Stern is also here, an eighth grader who's in Mr. Lumio's win. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Chuck Lumio.
Thank you again for some time. I've got some special kids up here with me. The beauty of our Family Friday and our win family, the Lumio family, is that it brings out the good in all of these kids. And I've got some great examples right here in front of me. Jigar and Abby are just wonderful, wonderful people who we've been able to see them grow in front of us and become leaders and inspire others. And we watch the younger grades gravitate towards the older grades. Jigar came to us from India and as a fifth grader, there was a lot of cultural differences here in the United States. And we spend, we spend time each day talking about things, just whatever comes to Jigar's mind, and we laugh and we have fun. And when I think about my day, the highlight of my day is at 2:25 when these kids come in and I get an opportunity to just talk and be a person with each one of them. So I want to introduce Jigar Patel real quick and then we'll get to Abby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jigar Patel and I thank, and I thank Mr. Lumio for letting me have a speech over here. So I like win because we get to do all these activities like a door contest and those things. Another good thing I like about it is that we can help each other like on our homeworks and like talk to each other. So yeah. Yeah, so I thank Mr. Lumio for letting me have a speech.
Thank you, Jigar. Fantastic. One of the things that Jigar also told me earlier is that like coming to win and coming into our family makes him feel less alone, more a part of things. Can you elaborate on that a little bit for us? You had told us about it.
Oh, yeah. So you get to talk to all the seventh and eighth graders and like when you meet them in the hobbies, you can like talk to them and like say hello and yeah. So you don't feel lonely, like you're the only fifth grader around and yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jigar. Hang out up here with the rest of your family while we, while Abby gets a chance to talk. So the other student that I have here today is Abby Stern, and I've watched Abby grow as a leader. She, last year is our first year in Family Friday, she had some people to look up to. She had eighth graders, great role models that she could look up to. And it really, I think, inspired her to become that same great role model. So I bring to you Abby Stern.
So I'm Abby Stern. I'm an eighth grader at Maple Point. And I came here, the first year that we started here, like in win class, the first year we started was when I was in seventh grade. And I was very nervous and I was very like hidden and like that's not normally me, like I'm very out and bold and all. And I was like very nervous and I would come in mid-year and I would know everyone there. You met like everyone with different backgrounds, like I would know even their names. I wouldn't even know where they're from. I didn't ask like any personal questions or anything like that. But I would just know them and I know that I, deep down inside, like I had a safe place. I can always talk to the eighth graders. I could look up to them. They would always come in, do their homework. We'd have a little bit of a conversation. And then this year, I became a leader as an eighth grader and we, we just, I met the fifth graders. Every single day, I just wait outside the door waiting for the fifth graders. I wait for Jigar every day, even though he's late most of the time. But I just know that like, wherever I am in the hallway, I just know that Jigar, like I know someone in the hallway just from win and I get to experience like where they're from or like if they have homework or I could say hi, I help them out with homework. Even if they're in my grade, I still help them out with homework because like it's just important creating like a bond with people in different grades, with different backgrounds and yeah.
Good job. So just to wrap it up, you know, we always get better at things as we go and this program's getting better and I can't wait to see where it heads in the future because we're on to something pretty big here. So thanks for your time.
Okay. So for our final installment, we were hoping to give everyone kind of a realistic view of what Family Friday looks like. We are very excited to have two staff members here with us and some of their, some of their win family. So Mr. Pienta?
We got him right there?
Can I introduce you first?
Relax.
Mr. Pienta, he's fired up. He's ready to go. This guy's fired up. Sixth grade special education teacher. Mr. Frank Verrell is one of our math teachers. And one of the great things about the Family Friday is the ability to join up with another family. So kind of extend your family. And we have a lot of teachers that do that throughout the course of the year. Mr. Pienta and Mr. Verrell are two teachers who often bring their families together on Friday for a little bit of fun. So they're going to show you a game, as you can see on the machine here, called Pientamania, which is a kind of a general knowledge trivia game. And they have some of their family members here. We have Linay Arpa, Logan Byrne, Julia French, Jack McVeigh, and Ryan Jacobson. And what we would like is to have some of our board members join either Mr. Verrell or Mr. Pienta's win family and maybe play around. I know Dr. McGee's probably looking at his watch. I know we're running a little overtime. So we're going to play, we're going to play eight rounds, quick rounds, eight rounds, and just give you a feel for what it's like to compete as part of a family. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pienta and Mr. Verrell.
Can we have the, can the classes come up here? There we go. All right. Okay, so, are you standing? Wow, we've got punch people. There we go. Okay. So it's very simple. We have too many, I guess?
Yeah, we don't have any questions. So we don't need everybody.
If they sit down, they have a bunch of someone up?
Yep, perfect. That works.
All right, you can see real quick, just ring it.
So the thing with Pientamania is very simple. I ask a question, you know the answer. You ring in. Once this rings, this does not ring. No tops. All right. Ready? First volunteer? Volunteer? You want a test ring? Know how hard you got to push it. Okay, test ring? Okay, here we go. Hold on. Here's our first question coming up up here. I'm trying. That's usually how many people for us. And if not, I'll just run the question. It's not your fault. Well, I have a local sports team, huh? It's a narc. Here we go. Question number one. The farm Maple Point High School opened in 1975. Who was its mascot? Two jerseys, correct? Test ring, now on your first. Uh, yeah. All right, here we go. Next question. At what temperature, what is the minimum boiling point of water?
A hundred degrees Celsius.
That is, correct. All right, next question. The planet which is closest to the sun is? Mercury. Mercury is correct. Which is the highest mountain peak in the world? I'll beat Mount Everest. Is, correct. Thanks for helping. Two of you students? Those two students? Which is the deepest ocean in the world? Pacific? Pacific is, correct. Way to go. Come on, boys. Which country is known as the land of the rising sun? You got it? Japan. Who was the first president to be inaugurated in Washington DC? James Madison. James Madison is incorrect. John Adams is incorrect. On the second guess, it was Jefferson. Last one here, kind of a visual one. One more? Come on, Ryan, represent. Last one, here we go. Jacob Rollins is the author of what? Harry Potter. We appreciate that. So I'd like to conclude this presentation. First, I'd like to thank you for participating and supporting Maple Point Middle School, and I want to share a little fact. So how do we know if this is working? We went back through some of our data. Back in 2015-16, we took a survey, a mid-year survey, and at the time, I looked at questions that were similar. Mid-year through, 53% of our students felt like they had an advocate or support at Maple Point halfway through the year. We gave the same type of survey this year to our students. Am I comfortable with knowing at least one adult? And over 73% felt comfortable, strongly agreed or agreed with that. And did they feel comfortable turning to another student to advocate, feel comfortable? Same thing, 74% of our students right now are feeling. Our goal is to get to 100%. We're not there yet, but we're definitely heading in the right direction. So I'd like to thank you for your time, appreciate your support for the program, and like to thank you for all that you do. Thank you very much.